I could call this Celine City Council Work Meeting to Order at 6:00 PM on September the 21st. Clerk Royal, are you with us?
I am.
Could you please call the floor, council members and city staff?
Mayor Protem Gearbaugh?
Here.
Councilmember CO?
Here.
Councilmember Mitchell? Councilmember Dillon?
Here.
Councilmember Del Orco?
Here.
Councilmember Camaro Sulek?
Here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I've got city manager. Interim City Manager Green?
Here.
City Engineer Fordice?
Here.
Steve is not here, Bennett is not here. Police Chief Hart?
Here.
Parks and Rec Director Scruggs?
Here.
Very good, a forum is present, and at this time the chair would entertain a motion to approve the work meeting agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Moved.
Moved.
I believe that was moved by Mayor Protem Gearbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make a commoner question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. The record will reflect, we have two members of the public attending in council chambers, we'll begin with them if they wish to make a comment. For those of you who are participating via Zoom remotely, if you'd like to ask a commoner question regarding Henry Street traffic calming and site distance improvements on South Ann Arbor, please feel free to type in your comments and questions under the chat icon at the bottom of your screen, and please indicate that they are to be read by the city clerk as part of the record. We'll begin with those in the audience. Mrs. Hess or Mr. McLoughlin would you care to make any comments this evening?
I do appreciate that, Mary Hess, I do appreciate that Henry Street has really gotten the load of this commie effect, and that's what the agenda's about. But I do want to address where there is a request of maybe continuing the closing of South Ann Arbor Street, so therefore this calming of Henry and Old Creek and other side streets is going to be a long-term type of thing, and this concerns me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Mayor Protem?
Well, I'm Scott McLoughlin, and I just wanted to make everyone aware, I know that there's a lot of work already been done on this process, but also I wanted to make everyone aware that doesn't live on Henry Street, specifically West Henry Street, that the traffic going downhill at that point, just past, I can't remember if it's Lewis, just past Lewis, the parking that's being stuck on the north side of the street really prohibits anybody from leaving their driveway and seeing any traffic coming down that hill, and they're coming down at a good clip many, many times. And I can't tell you how many times I've come on my driveway and had to slam on my brakes because someone comes flying down that hill. I've made suggestions in the past of moving the parking to the other side of the street where it's uphill, where most people are not going to be speeding when they turn the corner at Monroe going east on West Henry. So I would just ask that you look into that, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Clerk Royal, were there any comments or questions submitted electronically, either via the chat icon or in advance of tonight's meeting over email?
Not regarding the Henry Street.
Very good, and the record will reflect, we received comments from Mrs. Mary Hess and Mr. Scott McLoughlin. We'll proceed to the one discussion item of the evening, which is Henry Street traffic calming in South Ann Arbor intersection, site distance improvement. This is a follow-up to the conversation we had at our last meeting as a discussion item, but of course now we are going to continue that dialogue as part of a work meeting. So unless there are any comments from the city manager, interim city manager, or police chief, I'm going to turn it back over to Engineer Fordice to begin the discussion this evening.
No, sir, let's give it to Mr. Fordice.
Very good. Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours. Are you ready?
Yes, sir, thank you. I'm going to share my screen so that we are all on the same page. Hopefully you can see one of the sheets of the Henry Street plans. I'm going to start up at number one. Is everybody seeing that right now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So sheet one is just kind of an overall depiction of our existing conditions. There really aren't any significant pavement markings there. West of Harris Street, the road is about 35 feet wide. East of there, it's about 34 feet wide. And then Midwestern developed some alternatives for us, the goal of these being to visually narrow the lanes and hopefully reduce average speeds on the street. So in the first one here on sheet two, we looked at one cross-section across the entire length of it with two travel lanes, a bike lane, and one parking lane. This does reduce the overall amount of parking available on the street. The section east of Harris, so between Harris and Old Creek, currently has parking on both sides of the street. This one would eliminate that second lane of parking east of Harris. Option two is the same lanes in a slightly different configuration. Here, the parking lane and the bike lane are on opposite sides of the street. And option three is, this one gives us the widest travel lanes, which presumably would lead to the highest speeds, but two parking la-- oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong diagram there. This one has two parking lanes and two travel lanes, and actually ends up with the narrowest lanes. Zoom in on that. Maybe. Technical difficulties here. Okay. Here we go. Trying to come back. Well, all right, I'm not sure what's going on. I've lost my document. I'm going to try to close it and reopen it. So that option was the two parking lanes, two travel lanes, but that travel lanes end up quite a bit below standard width for a major street. And then the next option, which is the one that I recommended at our last meeting, is to, on the section between Harris and Monroe, pretty much keeping things the way they are, but marking them out more distinctly. So there'd be a center turn lane, and then the parking lane marked out with individual parking spaces. And then east of Harris, between Harris and Old Creek, we would then have no parking zones hatched out, and that would visually narrow the street at the locations where no parking is allowed. But it would maintain a kind of a flexibility in the traffic flow because there'd be a center line, but no edge line on the parking lanes. And that is shown in this option. Is that the screen back up for everybody? Okay, great. So this is the recommended option. It maintains all of the current parking, adds the center line, and then in the no parking zones has that pavement hashed out. And I think this is the best balance of options, given the major street standards and attempting to meet those as much as we can. So here I've zoomed in on the intersection of South Ann Arbor and Henry, and you can see in a little more detail that, you know, parking, areas where parking is restricted is hashed out, and then individual parking spaces are marked. And then in the section to the east, we have the center line and the no parking zones marked out. So that's pretty much covers, you know, what we talked about at the previous discussion item, and if we want to go to questions on these options right now, we also have--
Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Did you care to make any additional comments at this time regarding site distance improvements?
I think it'd probably be better to do these one at a time.
Fair enough, then we'll begin with questions. I would remind my colleagues, we have just an hour, so please do your best to exercise some brevity. We'll start with the folks at the dais with me, and then we'll transition to those participating remotely. So the order will be Mitchell, Del Orco, CO, and then I will jump to Gearbaugh, Dillon, Camaro Sulek. So any questions or comments? And again, we're starting with the traffic calming on Henry. So we'll begin with Councilwoman Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Jeff, can you please just confirm which is your recommended solution? I thought it was four, but then for a minute it sounded like you were recommending five.
Number four.
Number four, okay, that's all, thank you.
Very good. Mr. Del Orco?
Thank you, Mr. Morrow. Jeff, I'm looking at option number four, and wondering about the parallel parking spaces on the north side of the road. Are we proposing a white stripe line along the length of the road as well as perpendicular demarcations for each individual 22-foot spot, or just the white line itself?
In the, there would be individually marked spaces. That's what the recommendation of the downtown parking study was. So in this area here from Harris to Monroe, there would be individually marked spaces.
So my only concern would be that the net effect of that would actually end, result in a loss of parking spaces, because there's a couple of areas where I see in between driveways, there's only one space on the drawing, and from my observations, it's often two cars in that space. And there's a couple of other places where I think the kind of, the collective effort of the neighbors is just to be considerate of one another and make as much available parking as possible. And I'm just concerned that actually marking every 22 feet individually would end up, would result in a loss of parking, and that would be my only concern with option four. Otherwise, it looks pretty good.
I, you know, personally, I don't disagree with you, and, you know, there are certainly a number of vehicles that can fit into a much smaller space than 22 feet, and then there are others that can't. And that largely has been my approach, similar to what you suggested there is, you know, define a zone and let people make the best use of it. But our, the recommendation from the parking study, and I don't exactly recall the, what the rationale was, but they were very strongly in favor of marking individual spaces in the downtown area.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to raise the concern, and I just was wondering if we just put a line along the length of the road, if that would satisfy them, or if they actually were insistent upon marking each 20, every 22 feet?
That's what the, yeah, the parking consultants were very strongly in favor of individual spaces.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Fordice.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Del Orco. Councilmember CO, any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fordice, would you comment at all about what you think the impacts would be, both pro and con, to follow Mr. McLoughlin's suggestion? That is to move the parking on West Henry to the south side of the street such that people coming up the hill were challenged by those parking places instead of the people coming down?
Right. Certainly, the site distance challenge would be the same for either side, you know, so we'd be switching that problem from the north side to the south side. The argument that folks going uphill are, on average, traveling slower, I'm pretty sure that is supported by what our speed study found in that area. However, given the slope of the road itself, it's cross-slope, that road is not crowned in the center like a normal road. It's high on the north side, and then it slopes all the way across to the south side. So I've always felt that overall it was safer to have the parking lane on the north side so that in slippery conditions, if vehicles are losing control, they will slide to the south and, you know, hit the curb or hit a tree, but not hit vehicles.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Anything further, Mr. CO?
No, sir, thank you.
Mayor Protem Gearbaugh, any questions or comments for Mr. Fordice?
Yeah, Jeff, as you mentioned, slipping down the street during the winter, wouldn't be, wouldn't going down the street, you'd want to have them stay in the northbound, or the westbound lane?
Well, absolutely, yeah. I mean, yeah, we don't, we don't want them to, but I've just, you know, if somebody loses control and is sliding, just to have fewer things to crash into, obviously crossing the W line is very dangerous, and, you know, if we have inclement weather, that at least that, that's, that'll be bad regardless of which side the parking is on, but if it's a single-vehicle situation, sliding, then having them slide up against the curb rather than into cars will lead to less property damage.
Okay, thank you. And this may be part of the next one, when we talk about site distance and everything at Henry and South Ann Arbor Street, but the stop signs and issues, or can we talk about that at that point, about turning that into a four-way stop intersection?
Yeah, we can talk about that during the site distance discussion.
And then the other one, when you mentioned we're going to stripe it, so it'll be double yellow all the way from Monroe all the way down to Old Creek?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Oh, no, one other one, sorry. As we mentioned that we're going to be striping Henry Street, will we be doing any striping on South Lewis Street to identify parking spaces there?
I don't have that planned at this time, but I can double back and look at the parking study and see if that was a street they recommended marking out.
Okay, because that was, my concern was that street and also Harris, South Harris Street being marked.
South Harris, we did a double yellow on that a year or two ago, but we do have some dimensional challenges there as well in terms of marking out a parking lane on South Harris. So that's, we left that with just a double yellow.
Yeah, because my concern there has always been, there are double trailers and things that are parking there for hours on end, and so currently now that the barber shop isn't in the one location, but there are barbers in the others, in the, across the street or beautician at least, so making sure that they have appropriate parking for the use of those commercial businesses is one of my priorities for that area, too. So I'd like to have that considered again. Thank you.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Gearbaugh. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Jeff, I do have a couple of questions for you. In your memo, you mentioned about having fewer pavement markings helps with the fluidity of traffic. Is that a good thing, a bad thing?
It's just a thing. So there's certainly, you know, there's the written standards, and they are, you know, very much geared towards moving traffic quickly, and they're kind of idealized, especially in a retrofit situation. So, you know, if we were building Henry Street today to the major street dimensional standards and we wanted parking on both sides, we'd be looking at something around 40 feet wide, you know, so a significant amount of pavement, very wide. There are tons of streets across the state that don't meet the dimensional standards, and they function okay. You know, so it's, and it is that sort of, the fluidity that I mentioned that allows them to work okay. So, you know, if we were to fully stripe that section of Henry and try to force people into very narrow lanes and force parking into, you know, or really delineate the parking and force those narrow lanes, it would, it would create some tensions. So without the markings, you know, you have opposing traffic, then, you know, everybody can drift to the right a little bit as they pass and then come back towards the center line.
Okay, I appreciate that. I do have a couple of other questions. I noticed the drawings were dated January of 19. Has anything changed? Has anything been done to this, or is this as the drawings are, is the current situation?
There've been no dimensional changes along Henry Street, so these are all still perfectly applicable.
Okay. Do any of these changes impact, like, truck traffic, detours, anything like that?
No, these do not. So when we, when we use Henry Street as a parade route detour, we post it as no parking anyway. So that practice will continue, and that will allow that higher volume of a detour traffic flow a little bit smoother.
Okay. And then the other two questions I have, did the parking study do any kind of car counts, meaning how many cars are parked there on a regular basis?
They did. There was parking utilization rate in there. I don't remember exactly how granular that was, if it was, you know, how they broke down Henry Street, but that certainly was part of the analysis.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we're looking at accurate data. I don't want to subtract a couple of spots and say, oh, it's no big deal, if there was already a shortage there.
Yeah, and this, this plan doesn't, fairly certain this doesn't subtract any parking spaces. Maybe Scott Fisher could comment on that specifically, but I think all of these no parking zones are existing no parking zones.
Okay.
They'll just be, you know, more delineated.
Right. Okay, I have a couple of really other quick questions for the police chief. Sir, do you have any data, and I don't need it on the spot, as to accidents, speeding, you know, if there's anything there that we should be considering?
Trying to think of when the last time I collected data on Henry Street, what the speed signs was. It would be nothing that would be very timely for you. I think it was maybe spring of 19, it's the last time I would have had some traffic count and speeds from the speed signs. And of course, you know, my own observations are just about any time I can get in a uniform and a squad car, along with the other staff members, you don't have to sit very long to catch someone speeding on that road. It's pretty flagrant. I had a guy get out of the city limits the other day that was speeding through there and went through two stop signs, but was gone before I can get a car down in there to stop him, I was in my personal vehicle. So I do share some concerns. I think that on South Ann Arbor, it has been much better. I don't know what Mayor Protem Gearbaugh's experience is. I know he and I do exchange back and forth when he sees an uptick in speeding, but at least for me, I notice that cars are, once they get into those lined areas and striped areas, they do tend to slow down a little bit.
I agree with you on that. I do know that I have a tendency, in the area between Old Creek and South Harris, it does feel very wide open, and so you really have to be cognizant of your speed in that area. So I think striping would be a really good idea. Jeff, I'm going to end with one last question, which is, has Midwest provided any kind of recommendation?
Yeah, we discussed the various options and agreed that this number four is the best compromise.
Okay. And I want to make one last comment, and it's for Ms. Mitchell, because I think she might have the same issue I had, which is, it was a bit confusing, and this is why I think last week we talked about it. When you look at the drawings, I'm looking at a big giant number five, and so I kept thinking that you were talking about number five. On our sheets, or if you look even at what you have on the screen, where it says alternate number five in the little print, there was a hole punched in the page, so that number is actually missing.
Okay.
So that's why I couldn't figure out, like, I was having a hard time following along, and I finally figured it out as we started the process back up at the end of the meeting last week. So that might have been what she was referring to, too. So it's diagram five, which is proposal number four.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Camaro Sulek, any questions or comments for Mr. Fordice?
Yes, thank you, I do. Real quickly, so Chief Hart, we have two of those speed signs, is that, is that what we currently have?
That is correct.
Is there any way to get a better idea of what the current speeds are, and then after we implement this, see what it looks like after that?
Yes, I guess my only caution would be, we are in that, we're still in that pandemic traffic mode, but regardless, we can still gather some data. I don't think that traffic has returned 100% because there's still a lot of folks working from home.
Right.
There's always been that concern about data collection on Henry Street, and, you know, whether it was taken during a spring break, or, you know, summer recess, or whatever it is. We could certainly have an idea, you know, get an idea of traffic counts and speeds. My colleagues across the country are reporting speeds and aggressive behavior during this pandemic have increased significantly, along with traffic deaths throughout the country. So I think as the roads start to be more and more congested and traffic gets back at some point to a normal or a new normal, you know, that's something we can look at this data with just a, just the kind of idea that it was during a pandemic, but we can certainly get them out there.
Okay. Because I think it'd be good information, not that in particular, but just after this is implemented, of how well it's working, and if we need to do anything additional. And I won't say the word "speed bumps," but while I did, and I don't know if that, what other, so my question is, if we're still experiencing a lot of speeds, especially going westbound past South Ann Arbor Street, what would, what would our next option or options be before we would have to consider speed bumps? So I don't know if that's for the chief or for the chief and Mr. Fordice?
Well, I think, Mr. Camaro Sulek, it's a choice, you know, that certainly our drivers are making. They're not, there's multiple speed limit signs, I think they're making a choice to exceed the speed limit. It's happening on Mills, it's happening on Harris, it's happening throughout the city. So we would be a community of speed bumps, literally, to try to address everyone's concerns. I get complaints quite a bit. Last week, it was unpleasant ridge. So for us, it's trying to address that educational piece. It's very difficult when people are making that choice to speed. I think what Mr. Fordice has brought to the table tonight, we talk about the three Es of traffic safety, there's engineering, there's education, and then there's enforcement. And tonight, he's brought forth an engineering solution to try to visually shrink that road down, so to speak, to slow folks down. And then, of course, we could throw some more enforcement out there, but I will let Mr. Fordice speak specifically about warrants and things that call, would then call for speed bumps in the area. Jeff, I'm sorry, I'm going to pump that one to you.
No problem. So, yeah, so this is perhaps the least intrusive engineering effort at traffic calming with the pavement markings. There are additional measures, curb bump outs, kind of similar to what we have on Willis. Those can provide even more of that narrowing. Once you get beyond pavement markings, though, then-- Once you get beyond pavement markings, though, then you you really start to get into things that can negatively impact uh movement of traffic. Uh, so when we start getting into curb bump outs and and narrowing uh narrowing things at intersections, you start having trouble getting trucks moving around. Um, and you start to create um some more maintenance difficulties. Uh, plowing a parking lane that has bump outs at every intersection or intermittently uh is is, it's not impossible, but it is more work and it takes more time. You can look at um chicanes where you introduce curves into a straightaway. Um, again, you know, that's a, it's a concrete approach and it's um, so it has greater expense and again, it can create difficulty for truck movement. And then speed bumps, um, I am particularly not a fan of of speed bumps. Um, uh, there's been some studies that show, you know, obviously people slow down at the bump, um, and then they rev it up and go back to their desired speed in between and then slow down again. Um, so you get you get a momentary decrease in speed, but then you get additional noise and pollution and at the midpoints, they're at the same speed anyway. Um, and that, you know, and they're also a a maintenance issue with uh plowing with snow in the wintertime.
Okay, yeah, I'm hoping we don't need to put any additional measures in into place. I I just wanted to uh have a have an understanding and uh, don't get me wrong, I I don't like speed bumps. Um, I'm just hoping that we can keep our citizens safe and I know we're not going to have a, uh, if we go forward with option four, not have a bike lane, but as we all know, people will be riding their bikes down and they'll be catching, you know, a lot of speed as well. So I'm I'm really concerned about public safety. I like this. I like this option. I think it's I I think you've uh come up with a good um, you know, a good diagram, a good plan here. So I'm all I'm all for it and I'm I'm hoping that uh it that it'll work. Um, and that maybe if, maybe if we just need a little bit more enforcement, that's will be what it takes and I have all, you know, I have plenty of confidence in uh yeah, in Chief Hart to uh to do that. So um, thank you. I, that's all that I have.
Very good. That was a good place to end, Mr. Camaro Sulek, because my next question was uh regarding consensus on option four. So you made your position pretty clear. Let me work in reverse order. Uh, Councilwoman Dillon, and this may be premature to ask, so please tell me if 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 that is so, but uh, Councilwoman Dillon, are you comfortable with option four as outlined by City Engineer Fordice?
Think of the options available, yes. I mean, if it was if it was a conversation we were going to continue, then I would say, okay, um, we'll continue it, but I I if I'm deferring to his expertise. We've hired consultants. If this is the recommendation um for traffic calming, then I I think that's where we need to be.
Very good. Mayor Protem Gearba? He might be muted, Dean.
Um, yeah, I'm fine with option four. Considering that striping only lasts a couple of years, we can always assess what's going on on West Henry and determine whether or not switching the traffic back to the other side would be beneficial at that point, but let's go with this for now.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mr. CEO?
Yes, I agree that uh option four at the present time probably is the best of those offered. And I agree with Mr. Gearba's statement that you know, it appears that it would be better in future years to move that to the south side. Then we can always do.
Very good. Mr. Del Orco?
I'm in support of option four.
Very good. And Councilwoman uh Mitchell?
Yes, I also support number four. I I would like Mr. Fordice to just wrap up by talking about the driveway. And and the parking. And so is, do we have bigger vehicles that are blocking traffic different, you know, driveways differently than a sedan? Um, I guess that's the only thing, Your Honor, if you would um let me ask that question.
Absolutely. Mr. Fordice, did you hear uh my colleague's question?
I did. I'm not exactly clear on what what the question is, though.
Okay, so at the beginning of our meeting, we had a public comment period. Did you hear in first talk about uh the difficulty of exiting the driveway with parking?
Yes.
Okay, so that's what I was referring to. Is there a standard measurement that you leave clear on the driveway? A lot of people are driving SUVs rather than sedans. What um, what can be done to address that concern?
Yeah, so you can see on the on the drawing that we have held back the marking, the part, the marked parking spaces uh from the driveways on West Henry. There 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 is the standard in the motor vehicle code for how close parking can be to a driveway, and um we've incorporated that into the into the plan. There is nothing that regulates a parking space uh based on the size of the vehicle, though. Um, so, you know, obviously, if if we have a, a, you know, a very large uh you know, pickup truck with a lift kit or something parked there, that's going to create more of a visual obstruction than than a, you know, a small sports car or something. So, uh, but there there's nothing, um, nothing that I'm aware of that allows us to restrict parking based on some size of the vehicle.
No, I I wasn't suggesting that. I was just wondering how long this, the current measurement has been in place and if it's been, you know, since the eighties. Maybe cars are different, but um, that was, that was just the concern I want to raise.
Okay, Mr. Fordice, I believe you have consensus on that item. It appears unanimous that council prefers option four. Unless you have anything you'd like to state uh further on that particular matter, I would ask that you transition now to site distance improvements at Ann Arbor and South uh, South, excuse me, at Henry and South Ann Arbor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Terry, if you could unmute Scott, um, so he could participate a little more in this discussion, that'd be great. So what I have on the screen right now is a depiction of the recommended site plan improvements uh for South Ann Arbor and Henry Street. We, Midwestern did a a pretty thorough analysis, which is presented here, maybe. I assume you're seeing a blank screen. I don't understand that. Um. Okay. Let's go back to this one then. So this this is the recommended option for um the site distance improvements there. I will work on bringing back the site distance sheet and um perhaps looks like Scott's still muted. I don't know if, Terry, if we can get him unmuted and um he can comment on the the process that uh Midwestern went through in analyzing the site distance there. There he goes. Looks like he's available now.
Everyone hear me okay? So as Jeff was just describing, basically what we were looking at at this intersection was kind of three steps of where do we want to be for site distance, as in where should we be? What do we have right now? And then kind of where we can get in between those two. So on the drawing Jeff has up right now, that's where you then start to come across all these different lines. As we were trying to convey three different ideas. And what we really wanted to do by including the pictures was to help convey that true understanding of just all of the objects that really start to come into play when it comes to actually trying to get the proper amount of site distance. So I know at the last meeting, it was brought up over a couple of the items we had shown as being obstructions, so uh those pictures start to convey more of that so that we're all looking at the same bits. Um, with that, um, the kind of consensus that we came to is that being, obviously Salines is an older city, being this is closer to the main downtown area, so this was laid out however many years ago, which was well before modern vehicles were ever considered. Uh, what Jeff and I came to the conclusion on is most likely we won't be able to meet the letter of the recommendation when it comes to site distance. So at that point, what we did was we came up with a solution that we think makes it as good as we can get, given the constraints that we have.
And I will say
Jeff, anything?
Yeah, in in the um, in the guidelines, there are um a couple of defined points. There's there's the stop bar and um the the standards really aren't based, the site distance standards aren't really based on stopping at the stop bar. Stopping at the stop bar is a pedestrian safety issue. And if you do have adequate site distance from there, that's great, but most of the time you don't, um, even at at modern intersections. So then there's a a decision point um that that the highway transportation officials define um as a certain number of feet back from the edge of the traveled way. So, you know, you sneak forward in your car so you can increase your site distance and and look further. One of these red lines represents that distance. Um, I think it's the third one. And um, we had issues where even at that point, um, we couldn't get adequate site distance. So the strategy that we incorporated here was using pavement markings to move the edge of the traveled way uh that on the on Ann Arbor Street. So we're using paint pavement markings to narrow the travel lane, gain Henry Street drivers another couple of feet so that they can, you know, sneak forward again uh safely and see further up and down the street before making their turn and movement. And so this this drawing shows the changes that uh would be recommended in that alternative um on the and north is to the right on this drawing, so. So on the southern leg of the intersection on South Ann Arbor Street, we introduced pavement hatching there to uh push vehicles closer to the center line so that when they're traveling through the intersection, um, they are further from the vehicles on Henry Street. Um, and then we, across the intersection, have hatching that hopefully will visually help maintain that alignment while they're going through the intersection. Um, and then uh it also uh recommends removing two parking spaces. Um, so those are some of the significant of site obstructions when there's a a vehicle parked in those two spots shown here and here. That significantly limits how far you can see when you're over here or in this location here.
Very good. Anything else you'd like to add, Mr. Fordice?
Um, no, I think that is it.
I I would remind my colleagues, we have just fifteen minutes left before our next regular meeting and I suspect, or before our regular meeting, excuse me. Uh, and I suspect that this issue will generate some discussion. So assuming that we do not uh achieve consensus this evening, this will be added as a discussion item at our next meeting, that first Monday in October, which will give you two weeks to uh uh address any questions or concerns you have to add to Mr. Fordice or via the interim city manager. Again, we'll begin to begin in the same order as uh the first discussion item, so I will excuse me, start with Councilwoman Mitchell and end with uh Councilmember Camaro Sulek. Councilwoman Mitchell, the floor is yours. Questions, comments for either Mr. Fordice or our guest from Midwest Consulting?
Uh, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Fordice. Thank you, Scott. Um, I guess my only sticky wicket are those trees on the the private property, and maybe we're just talking about pavement markings for now. Um, I have no problem with eliminating the two parking spaces, and I I think this might work to um solve the issue. Thank you.
Good. Mr. Del Orco?
Uh, I'll echo those comments. I I think everything is is okay with this, except the removing tree C two in particular. I visited the site this weekend. Tree C one is closest to the the site distance impediment and it's half dead anyway. Um, I don't think there's an issue removing tree C one. However, I circulated some pictures of C two around earlier today. It is a mature, beautiful, green tree that provides a lot of aesthetic appeal to that part of our our community and it would break my heart to see that tree come down. And I think we can achieve a reasonable amount of site distance improvement simply by removing tree C one. And that would be all I have to say about it.
Very good. Mr. CEO?
I'm in favor of what's proposed by the engineering firm. Uh, I understand people's sentiment about not wanting to remove existing viable trees. However, when you look at the life of a tree versus the life of an individual, uh, I don't think there is a comparison. Some of these trees apparently live longer than some of the individuals. And we might be trying to uh keep from harm, but still, I think that uh it's better to remove the tree, to remove the site blockage and save the individual lives.
Very good. Um, Mayor Protem Gearba, questions or comments? You're muted, Dean.
Apologies, I was trying to keep that off. Um, I'm fine with the proposal. Um, couple of things. There is a bush at the corner, would be the southeast corner there on Henry and South Ann Arbor. That's on the old, it's on the former library, the old former library property. Right, um, that bush is a site distance issue when you drive up onto that intersection. I drive, and that needs to be considered as part of a problem there too, because often when you're driving up that intersection, you have to pull up and get past it to see what's going on. So I'd like that to be considered and investigated a little further. Um, my other big concern and has been an issue is um, I think this is time to make this a four-way stop. The pedestrian traffic has continued to increase on it. Um, we're consistent with the other three intersections where we have four-way stops, except for at South Lewis. We have it at Hat- um, South Harris, and we have it at um Old Creek. And as we become more and more a pedestrian-friendly type situation, and especially now with the closure of the street, having that stop sign, for me, because I travel it every day, has seemed a lot more beneficial in terms of people having to watch for traffic. I've always noticed how individuals roll towards into the intersection so much, and whatever we do, that's going to be part of the concern for this intersection is knowing that traffic has a tendency not to want to stop because they know they can um just fly through it. I'd rather have it a four-way stop and to address that concern of pedestrian. I know one time we did it, looked at it and thought it was an issue with stacking and everything for the traffic at Michigan Avenue, but at this point, I think um safety stands first. So, just my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Gearba. Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. I want to uh echo what Mr. Gearba said about making that intersection a four-way stop. Um, and if possible, even having a flashing overhead light um to train people to get used to it when the Michigan Avenue makeover was in process. Um, that was definitely beneficial and people did seem to um to abide by it a little bit more. So, Mr. Fordice, two quick questions. First, since South Ann Arbor Street has been closed, the loading zone that was on South Ann Arbor in front of the old Benito's is obviously not in use. And it is sort of redirected to other places. Would there be an opportunity to remove that loading zone now that we have sort of moved the dog dish and trained the dog? Um, and then be able to realize parking there to make up for the parking that we are losing in another place?
Um, that's certainly a possibility. Um, not anything that I've looked at, uh, but we could uh have some discussions on that and see if there is a another viable loading zone. As you point out, obviously, it's working right now, um, but um I'm not sure how uh deliveries compare now to in, you know, quote unquote, normal times, you know, if if restaurants, I assume their volume is down and they're not getting as many deliveries. So perhaps it works in this scenario, um, but it wouldn't work in a, when things are opened up again. Um, but that's, it's, it's a very good suggestion. I think it's worth looking at.
Okay, I appreciate that. Um, my other question is, um, just to clarify, you're talking about moving some of the hash marks on the street. Is that correct, like the crosswalks?
Under this, the the crosswalks would stay in the same locations, uh, because they're lined up with the existing ramps. Um, so we're adding hatching on the on the asphalt to to kind of change the location of the travel lane. So this this would be crosshatched pavement marking this area. This area would be hashed out. This would be hashed out.
Oh, so just to indicate that there is no parking?
Yeah, so these would be for no parking. This would be, this little strip here is to help reposition cars traveling northbound. This is also to reposition cars northbound, which gives people here more room to sneak forward and look up and down the street.
Okay. Oh, I appreciate that. Mike, because I was a little confused because I was trying to figure out if that meant redoing sidewalks, ramps to realign. I misunderstood, so thank you very much. I do want to comment about the tree. I absolutely am in agreement with Mr. Girbaugh about that bush on the southeast corner. As far as the trees, there does appear to be one that is dead that I would, it is on private property, but I would think should be removed. The one that is in the lawn extension, the other tree that is under consideration. I hate to see a mature tree going, but we did go through this in other projects, the Michigan Avenue project, Merchant Park. And sometimes trees sort of outgrow their useful life. And it's almost better to have them removed. Would we replace that with a small tree or would there just be nothing there?
Well, that's one of the big challenges with trees. I mean, they have a lot of positive benefits and they do, in certain locations, create sight distance problems. So certainly from a downtown aesthetics landscaping point of view, we would definitely want a tree there. We might be able to position it a little further north and that could reduce its impact on sight distance. You know, or we could leave it. You know, we've kind of accepted that we're not going to get to 100% sight distance. I would pull up one of the pictures here.
But if that were to become a four-way stop, it really wouldn't matter because everybody would be stopping anyway and you wouldn't need that advanced sight distance because you would be to the intersection and have better sight distance, correct?
That's interesting. Yeah, I mean, that's certainly what you would think, but there still are sight distance requirements for controlled intersections. And there's a preference and there's some case law that supports maintaining sight distance even at a controlled intersection. So, you know, we would want to do the best we can. We have studied this as a four-way stop. We've studied it as a signalized stop and it has not met the warrants for either of those types of control. So we can, when you put in a traffic control that doesn't meet warrants, you invite some liability. So we could look at that and evaluate that and decide if that liability is something that the city wants to accept in, you know, in exchange for the traffic calming effect and the, you know, the easier pedestrian access. But that would require a little bit of additional study.
Okay. I would be in favor of pursuing something like that. Thank you very much.
Folks, if you may, we're trying our very best to keep this to about 10 people in the audience, so if a few of you wouldn't mind hanging out in the hallway. I know there's some folks that are going to be presenting early on the agenda and then they will leave, so just be mindful of that. Okay, we are trying to keep it to about 10 people, 10 people in the audience here. My apologies. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, questions?
Yes, thank you. I'm good with the eliminating the two parking spaces. Hopefully we can sufficiently improve the sight distance. I really wish we could save that tree C2. I was gonna say, I'd trade the bush for the tree, but public safety is the most important. I am all for looking more closely at a four-way stop for the safety there. I ride my bike quite frequently on Henry and, you know, it's a well-traveled right now and maybe it will increase as time goes on. So I'd like to look at that four-way stop option and if there's any way to save the C2 tree, especially if we do the four-way stop. And I would be for planting a new tree that's repositioned in a safer place. You know, looking ahead, you know, five, 10, 15 years down the line, you know, I think that would be a good step to do at this point. And I'll wrap it up with that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kamara Sulek. I'm basically in agreement with the recommendation, Mr. Fordyce. However, based on the sentiments of my colleagues, it appears we do need to have a follow-up discussion about the vegetation, specifically the trees. And much like Mr. Girbaugh, Ms. Dillon, and a few others, I do think further evaluation is needed pertaining to a four-way stop at Henry and South Ann Arbor. My own anecdotal observations are a bit different. It never ceases to amaze me when I'm either north or southbound on Ann Arbor Street, how many people already stopped pre-COVID, prior to the recovery zone being established, thinking that it is a four-way stop. So my general thought is that establishing a four-way stop at that intersection would probably improve safety, both vehicular and pedestrian safety, but I think it warrants further evaluation. So the clerical please make note that we will add this as a discussion item at the conclusion of our next regular meeting, two weeks from now. In the interim, if folks have questions or concerns pertaining to this issue, please direct them to the interim city manager or our city engineer. Before we conclude tonight's meeting, Mr. Fordyce, is there anything that you would like to add?
Just on this screen here that you're seeing right now, this is looking, this right here is the tree that we've identified as being mostly dead and no big issues with removing that one. This is the one that is a healthy, viable, very attractive tree. So when you're at the stop bar, you kind of see behind that tree. And when you are at this next decision point and this tree is removed, you can see behind the nice tree. And when you get out to our sort of extreme final decision point here, you can see around it. So I think it's a fairly reasonable approach if we eliminate the visual obstruction of this parking space and the dead tree, that we might have reasonable sight distance before that tree and ahead of that tree.
Very good. Fair enough. Appreciate that, Mr. Fordyce. Thank you for your time. We also thank our guests from Midwest Consulting for attending this evening. If there's nothing time-sensitive, the chair would entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at 6:58 PM.
Moved.
By Mitchell, was that seconded by Girbaugh?
Yes.
Very good. They've probably moved and seconded to adjourn this work meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Ayes have it. This meeting is adjourned. If you'd please call the seat, city council meeting orders. You please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag to my left. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Clerk Royal, if you'd please call the roll, including council members and staff.
Mayor Potem Girbaugh?
Here.
Councilmember CEO? Councilmember Mitchell? Councilmember Del Orco? Councilmember Kamara Sulek?
Here.
Mayor Marl? Waste water treatment plant superintendent Wigoski?
Here.
Treasurer Bennett?
Here.
Interim city manager Green?
Here.
Police chief Hart?
Here.
Parks and rec director Scruggs?
Here.
Wonderful, a quorum is present. The rest of you who are in the audience are participating with us remotely. We welcome you. For those who are in council chambers, there are agendas on the back table and we'd also encourage you to sign in. At this time, the chair will actually move to approve the agenda as amended. Before we get to citizen comments, there will be two very abbreviated special presentations. Is there a second to approve the agenda as amended? Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. All those in favor approving the agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Let's begin, perhaps Molly, I could invite you to the podium. Molly Lumbercoy, along with our friend Kim Bryant, were the co-chairs of Celine, Ms. Celine 2020. As most of you know, it was, I guess for lack of a better term, Molly, it was dormant for a year.
For a year.
And with, and under your leadership and under Kim's leadership, you brought it back. And so on behalf of myself, city council, and the community, we're indebted to you. We thank you for that. It's a great program, a great scholarship program for talented young ladies in the Celine community. And we have some of the
Talented young ladies.
And the first and second runner-up with us this evening, who Molly will introduce. I will say before I yield the floor to Molly that myself, along with three others, were honored to serve as judges. And I can honestly say that all of the young ladies who participated are incredibly talented.
Absolutely.
Their academic and extracurricular achievements are really quite something and they should be very impressed and very pleased with themselves. So with that, Molly, I'm going to turn it over to you and if you'd like to introduce our guests, that would be marvelous.
Thank you so much, Mayor Marl, and thank you for serving as a judge. This is the 72nd year of Ms. Celine, so quite a tradition in the community. Myself and Kim Bryant, our two daughters, were 2017 and 2018, so the last two Ms. Celines. And we did not want to see this wonderful tradition not continue. So we're very excited. We had tremendous support from the community and the area businesses and happy to bring Ms. Celine back this year. We had nine wonderful young ladies and our current Ms. Celine, joining me up here, Shioni Bandiopadi, and then our first runner-up was Ava Ignazio. Ava, do you want to come up here as well? And our second runner-up, Maya Abdallah. Come forward, girls. Come so everybody can see you. So these wonderful young ladies are just stellar academic performance, extracurricular, all around. They competed in an event where they had a pre-interview, onstage questions and interview, evening gown modeling, and several of them actually performed, I think, as well as guest performers that day. We were very fortunate to have our event at the farm, the Rentschler Community Farm and Museum. The Celine Area Historical Society was very gracious to allow us to be there. And it was such a beautiful day because the flowers were blooming and the little farm there, everything was beautiful. Really, it was just, couldn't ask for a better day. So these young ladies will actually be representing the city of Celine. They'll be participating in many ambassador kinds of activities this year. Everything from supporting reading in the schools to local charitable events, to supporting the chamber and business events. Really, Ms. Celine has grown from what it used to be, which was supporting the community fair, to much more of an ambassador program for the whole community. And so we're really proud of that. So I'd like to ask, girls, would you like to share anything?
Sure.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Shioni Bandiopadi. I'm Ms. Celine 2020 and my experience was absolutely wonderful. From the pageant itself, where I got to meet some wonderful young women and very talented people and even to the things that I've been able to do and the opportunities I've already been able to have as Ms. Celine. So I've been doing some sponsorship Saturdays to highlight the businesses and the leaders in our community. And I will be volunteering with Celine Area Social Services soon to put together some Thanksgiving baskets. And closer, in October, there will be the trick-or-treat, what, is it trunk-or-treat? Parker treat. There we go, park-or-treat. That will be happening at Milpon Park for the Ms. Celine Court. So I'm very excited to continue being able to be an ambassador for the community and further community service and involvement from my part. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Shioni.
Girls, would you like to say anything?
Hello, my name's Ava Ignazio and I was so thrilled to be able to participate in this pageant. It has meant the world to me. I had so much fun, met so many beautiful people inside and out, and I'm looking forward to what I get to do for the community in the future. It's been such an honor, events like even just going to a Celine City Council meeting that I only went to a couple because of AP US government. We had to go to a couple, so, but I'm super looking forward to it and I could not be more honored to be here today. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maya Abdallah. I was second runner-up for Ms. Celine. And the pageant in and of itself was a great experience for anyone to do. It's like you really step out of your comfort zone and you get put in that stressful situation where you have to answer questions on the spot. And it was a great experience and I met amazing girls and all the girls that I got to meet were amazing and it was a really enjoyable experience. And I really look forward to continuing helping out with the community and giving back to the community.
Let's give these young ladies a round of applause.
So I'm wondering if we could have just a quick picture, if they just turned around? You want to stand in front of the table? Thank you so much.
Ladies, again, congratulations. Thanks for your time this evening and we, all of us, look forward to working with you as goodwill ambassadors for the Celine community. That's such a vital role for each of us to play and we're so thrilled to be able to partner with you in this upcoming year. So thanks again.
Thank you so much.
Okay, transitioning now to another brief presentation. As I mentioned a week ago, my office saw fit to recognize some outstanding Celine community members who have stepped up to the plate and really gone the extra mile during the whole COVID-19 pandemic. We recognized one individual last week. I have two additional proclamations. I don't believe Kirsten Bach is with us this evening, but Diane DeNio is. Would you mind standing, Diane? And actually, it's my understanding, Diane, that this certificate of appreciation that we'll be presenting you with is a little bit dated. Diane has created masks and donated, as of the writing of this tribute, $4,500 to Celine Area Social Services to assist them during this critical time. But I believe that dollar amount is a little low. What is the current dollar amount that you have raised and donated?
I just dropped off a $1,000 check today, making a total of $6,500.
Very good. So I will get you an amended tribute, but yes, please give her a round of applause. It is my honor to present you with this proclamation. Would you like to, would you like to share some remarks and talk a little bit about your initiative? That'd be great. Thank you, Diane.
Well, this all started with Karen Carrigan. I made six coffee bean masks for her and her staff and she asked me, would you be willing to make some masks to sell at the Carrigan Cafe? So I shared this recognition with Karen. So I started making masks. I had been donating them to the evangelical home and to classrooms and to healthcare facilities around Michigan homeless programs in New York. around Michigan, homeless programs in New York. But I started out with Karen, and I started stocking them there and then going on Saturday morning, selling them, and the Celine community was just really great. So $6,500 as of today, and I will keep selling them. Also, Mary Lindquist from The Quilting Season gave me a bunch of donated fabric from a quilt guild, which has helped, and another friend, another quilter, Sylvia Brown, a community resident here, gave me a whole lot of fabric. So it's not just my endeavor, it's a community endeavor.
Well, we recognize those other partners and congratulate them as well. I would note, and I've mentioned this, I think, well, a litany of times since the initial lockdown went into effect in March, but it is essential that we all wear masks when we're in, or we should avoid large groups, when we're in any group gathering, and of course, whenever we're out and about. So they serve a vital function, so that's great, that you're able to sell masks at a time when we need them. I'd also note that, as was previously mentioned, you've donated a significant amount to Celine Social Services, which helps the most vulnerable and needy in our community. And also, the mask that you're wearing, Diane, that is one of your own creations, correct? So you could all, you should, we should also note for the record, they're much more attractive than the innocuous generic masks that many of us have, yeah. It's a fashion statement, right?
Yeah, and Karen and my husband. I custom make masks for people, so I've had people, I've done bridesmaids group, I've done some prison employees who had to have a certain style, so it's been quite an interesting little project.
You've entered into quite the cottage industry.
Yeah.
Good for you. Let's give her one more round of applause. Thank you for being here tonight, Diane. We appreciate that. We'll proceed now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. I will note that we'll begin with those who are in attendance. In council chambers, we have several who may wish to speak to one or more agenda items. I will note, for those that are participating remotely, you may type in your comment or question under the chat icon at the bottom of the screen. Please be mindful that many of us, myself included, I don't have access to a tablet or an electronic device during today's meeting, so I'm not actively following the discussion or comments that are provided via Zoom. And if you want your comment read, make sure that you note that you want it read at either the first and/or second public comment period. Again, the first is limited to agenda items, the second public comment period at the conclusion of tonight's meeting, you can address any issues that you care to address. So with that, are there any members of the audience this evening that would like to speak to a enumerated agenda item, either an action item or a discussion item? Please, Mrs. Hess.
Mary Hess. Agenda item as far as summer penalty and interest, there are two people, residents, that have asked for a, they're requesting the consideration of a one-time waiver by the Celine City Council on their taxes that they didn't get in time. Well, I didn't realize, we do this all the time, and I know that the hotel is behind. Are they going to come then for their one-time waiver of a tax penalty? I think this is really starting a concern. The other item, as far as Maple Road pavement repairs, every time we have a subdivision built, we have the big machinery come in with heavy front-end loaders and everything, and they tear up the road, and I've been told that there's nothing as far as the builders repairing it, it's up to the city taxpayers to repair the road. And I think, if nothing else, maybe we should start something through the state to where the developers are in fact helping repair the roads rather than us doing it. Then the third item is downtown recovery zone. Earlier in the meeting, work meeting, there's talk about a four-way stop on Henry Street, and I think it's very important that that be publicized so the taxpayers and the residents of Celine and other residents know that this is being contemplated. Many people, business people have come up and others that are concerned in that when they have built outside of the main downtown and had a business, they had to provide the parking, provide the lighting, provide the cleaning of their parking, and yet they get to pay for their taxes to provide for the parking and all the things for downtown business. Many people are concerned as far as that how much is this costing and the continuation of closing South Ann Arbor Street or North Ann Arbor Street as far as the costs. Henry Street is being, having problems, and Old Creek is super busy. I don't know what Act 51 monies is, but it's a classification of a road where we recoup money because of the use of the road, and I would hope that that is addressed when some of our local roads are definitely getting heavy traffic at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Are there additional comments on agenda items from any member of the audience this evening? The record will reflect there are none. Clerk Royal, were there any comments submitted via Zoom or via email in advance of tonight's meeting or during tonight's meeting where the individual would like their comments read as part of the public record?
Yes, I got an email today from Mr. John Cle, and he wanted these comments read into the record. Says, Dear Celine City Council, my understanding was that our taxes were direct debit. I was misinformed. Therefore, I am requesting that the penalties and interest be waived in the amount of $158.60 and $39.65 in the total amount of $198.25. The taxes were paid today in the amount of $5,339.42. Thank you for your consideration, John Cle.
Thank you. We appreciate you providing comments in advance of tonight's meeting. Were there any additional comments, Clerk Royal?
No, there were not.
Very good. Then the record will reflect that the city council received two comments this evening. We'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Moved as submitted.
Moved by CO to approve as submitted. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. We moved a new business item 20-147, summer tax penalty and interest request. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo for property taxes at 349 West Bennett, 467 Cottonwood Lane, Clark Lane Apartments, 148 South Industrial Drive, and 586 Lancaster, and the September 15, 2020 memo from Treasurer Bennett.
Moved to acknowledge receipt.
Moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Camaro Sulek. Treasurer Bennett, do you care to comment on your memo and the process that is being proposed this evening?
Absolutely. So the, as you can see in this memo, we've had a number of inquiries as to waiving the penalty and interest. The city of Celine does not provide, has not typically provided for any waiver of summer or any tax penalty and interest in the past, as taxes are mailed out July 1st, and there's ample time in December 1st, there's two months to make arrangements to have these bills paid. We do. Traditionally, if there's a clerical error, we will be able to remove that, and that's all stated by state charter. Our charter states that the city council is the body that assesses this penalty and interest, and I apply it to the tax bill. So any request to have it removed or considered for removal is an action that's required by the city council unless there's a billing error, and none of these have any administrative errors that are being presented this evening.
Very good. Thank you, Treasurer Bennett. We'll open it up for questions or comments. We'll begin with those at the dais. Any questions or comments? Mr. CEO.
Yes, Your Honor. It appears that there's some differing reasons for each of these five persons requesting relief. Do we need to consider all five as a lump group?
Mrs. Bennett, do you want to talk about that? That would, I don't know, first, well, first, I don't know if you heard Mr. CEO's question, but when the transition team originally reviewed the agenda for this meeting, they were all separate enumerated items, and then it was your recommendation to lump them into one overarching motion, for lack of a better way to articulate it. Do you want to talk a little bit about your rationale for that?
Sure. So my rationale for that is that, as this demonstrates, there are multiple reasons why we may consider, that, you know, the council may want to consider waiving of penalty and interest, but as I stated, in my years of service here, we have never took any action on these, so that's why I thought we would do it under one umbrella.
Any questions from the dais? Questions from those participating remotely? I can't see any of you on the screen at the moment, so I'll call on you individually. Mr. Gearbaugh, any thoughts?
I just accept Ms. Bennett's recommendation.
Very good. Ms. Dillon, any questions or thoughts?
I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Very good. And Mr. Camaro Sulek?
No questions at this time, thank you.
Very good. Ms. Bennett, thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? It's simply to acknowledge receipt. There appears to be none, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Camaro Sulek, to acknowledge receipt. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 20-148, final payment for 2020 Maple Road pavement repairs. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 14, 2020 memo from City Engineer Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the final payment for completion of the 2020 Maple Road pavement repairs in the amount of $48,160 to Asphalt Specialists Incorporated.
Moved to acknowledge and to approve.
Moved by Gearbaugh to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. CEO. Mr. Fordice, you going to make a brief comment?
I think it's a pretty straightforward item. We got in and out in a day there and made a nice improvement. The pay request is for the exact amount of the quote, and we did get a little bit extra pavement. There was one area where we had designated a part with pavement, and the contractor opted to do that as full width, no additional charge, because it reduced his labor cost.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. Are there questions for Mr. Fordice from the dais? From those participating remotely, I can see Mr. Gearbaugh. Mr. Gearbaugh, any questions?
None.
No? Ms. Dillon, any questions?
I don't. Mr. Fordice was kind enough to answer my question in advance.
Very good. Mr. Camaro Sulek?
No questions. It's straightforward, thank you.
Very good. Any discussion on the motion? Well, let me just say very briefly, in response to the question posed by Mrs. Hess during the public comment period, she is indeed correct. There is nothing in state statute that permits municipalities to levy penalties or fees on developers, contractors who tear up the roads. However, that is something that I've messaged on previously in one of my State of the City addresses, and I've also had conversations individually with Senator Erwin and Representative Zinsky, our local state rep and state senator, about introducing legislation to allow for that, because I do think that would be a useful tool to have in our tool belt to help maintain and, more importantly, repair damaged roads. So if there's nothing further on this motion, it has been properly moved and seconded by Gearbaugh and CEO to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move to our last action item of the evening, which is new business item C-20-85, downtown recovery zone. Let's start with a simple motion to acknowledge receipt of the September 16, 2020 memo from Interim City Manager Green.
So moved.
Moved by Dillon to acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by CEO. Mr. Green, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. So as laid out in the memo and the attachments with it, the downtown businesses are requesting that our current recovery zone be extended from October 31st to November 30th. So that's the overall concept we're looking at today. There is one change to the memo I gave you guys. In my memo, I said that Mr. Fordice and I thought October 31st was the end date for this by state law. We got it confirmed on Friday that the state did change it, so the end date officially is now November 30th for these special permits. So that would be a good discussion topic for us going forward, but that is essentially what the downtown businesses are currently asking for, is that extension of that business recovery zone.
Very good. And we do have a number of downtown businesses represented this evening, Brecken Grill, Excalibur Barber Shop in Kirkeby. We appreciate you being here. Holly Andrews is the executive director of Celine Main Street. Is there anything that you would like to add at the behest of any of your merchants or downtown property owners?
Hi.
If you wouldn't mind coming into the microphone, just so that those who are participating remotely can carry you.
Hi, everybody. It's wonderful to be here. Nice to see you all. I am here in support of the businesses who want to extend until November 30th, and I have many reasons for that, but I think I'll let them speak on their own behalf, and I'll be here to clarify as needed. The business coalition that's come out of this is really impressive. There's been a lot of work, give and take within the community there, so I am really impressed by the initiative, and I just want to give them kudos for that.
Very good. Paul, Marty, Karen, why don't you hang tight? We're going to open it up to questions. If council members have questions for, well, certainly ask questions of Mr. Green and Holly Andrews, but if you have specific questions for any of the merchants who are represented this evening, please ask them, and I would request that if you are asked a question, please come to the podium to speak, and speak into the microphone, because we do have a number of people who are watching and participating remotely. So we'll open it up for questions first on Mr. Green's memo. I'll start with those at the council dais. Are there any questions? Start with Mr. CEO, and then jump to Ms. Mitchell.
Yes, I understand that of those that work in, on their businesses downtown, there are differing impacts of this recovery zone, so I guess I would ask anybody who wanted to address this negatively, please come forward and share your thoughts with us.
Hello, I'm Martin Flint. I own Excalibur Barbershop for 51 years. It's, this shutting the street down has cut my business down 50%. We have three barber shops in Ann Arbor which have closed, and one in F.C. and one in Celine, and because of the street being closed, there's no traffic going by, and so all of these customers from these other shops don't see my business, and so they have a hard time, you know, seeing us to come in. Another question, somebody said something about maybe putting tents up, and I'm kind of worried about that, because I don't know if they're going to be enclosed, is that going to be the same as if they was inside? Or, and then another thing, they was talking about maybe putting heaters in, is that, what if the carbon monoxide poisoning could affect different patrons that are in there eating? And then some of the restaurants, they, I work six days a week, and some of the restaurants, they're closed on Monday. If people are that worried about making money, why wouldn't they open six days a week and work more hours? I've always had to work more hours if I needed more money, and I guess that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Karen, Paul, would you like to?
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. I cannot hear what is being said from the podium.
Okay. So I'm going to ask folks who are, who come to the podium, please remove your mic, or please, please remove your masks, and make sure you're not on top of the mic. We've noticed over the past couple weeks that it seems counterintuitive, but you want a maybe a good six inches between you and the microphone. Any additional comments? Paul, please.
Good evening, folks. I'm Paul from Brecken Grill. We have been there 18 years, this past July, and it has been a creative struggle, I guess you can say, to be successful in these times, and I think one thing I'm very supportive of is my neighboring businesses over at Max and over at Smokehouse 52, and I have collectively put together a downtown music series that we've had in the past years to have on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. That has created tremendous pedestrian traffic downtown for those days. I do know that some new businesses, or a new business has opened up downtown in the old Marine Designs spot, and has been successful at that location, partially due to the traffic that's downtown during Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. I do know that going into the cooler months, the limitations from restaurants at 50% capacity by the governor puts us at a little bit of a risk for all of us on that main drag. And I say that primarily to the effect that it's not 50% if you can't have six feet between tables. So for our restaurant, the capacity- So for our restaurant, the capacity that we have is 115 seats normally, and we are limited to 34 inside. So that takes us below 25%. I would say right around 25%. As long as the weather is cooperative, I'm completely in support of having that closure downtown on that street for us to help weather these storms. I think it's great for downtown and would hope that possibly next summer, it might happen again with the support of the city and the support of the community. I do understand that there are other businesses that are affected by it. I do know that, you know, we all have employees, that we make sure that they need to make a living. And I'm primarily more interested in their success and their livelihood than the livelihood of my own business at this moment. I just would like to navigate the waters as long as possible with that street closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Karen, is there anything you'd like to add? You don't have to, but if you'd like to speak?
Thank you for the opportunity to come in. What did I want to say? I wanted to say, no, I am, I know I wrote in not favor of, but that was misunderstanding the communication at the meeting that was held outside with the noise from Michigan Ave of the various semi trucks and other motor vehicles that like to accelerate extremely loudly. So I misheard, and I thought that they wanted to extend it through the whole winter, not just through November. So in my letter that I emailed to all of you was to do through partial November speaking, because of the weather. And I had heard something about tying a tent to the electrical poles. And so I, growing up in Michigan, you know that the weather's going to do what it wants to do. And I had visions of the wind blowing and the heavy snow and ice and blowing down the, or pulling down the electrical. And I thought that would be a very bad thing to do in many ways, and not safe in many ways. And then also, the electrical would be harmed, which would harm all the businesses. So that was mostly what I was referring to with that, was the extreme. But I don't want to see anybody go out of business, no. Yes, it is helping everybody. It does affect my business, and yes, I have sacrificed some of my business. Some days have been up, some days have been down. I like to tell people that we're on a boat in the lake, we're in a no-wake zone, but there's a few waves coming through, and we're all doing okay. We're all doing well. So thank you. And there you go.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. Mr. CEO, any additional line of question?
No, Your Honor. No, thank you.
Good. Additional questions from the dais? Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to say it's really great to see everybody collaborate in this way. Holly, if you wouldn't mind answering some questions. You know, we all love Mr. Marty. I wave to him very, very frequently. Is there anything out of the box that we could do to help support the barber shop?
Absolutely. And I do want to make a point that we actually created a partial street closure so that we could provide parking right in front of Marty's barber shop. And I work with Marty all the time, and I don't ever want him to feel that he's alone. His daughter is his email recipient, so she and I communicate on his behalf. And then I see Marty, I walk in the door all the time and check in on him. I think the thing that's really difficult is there's a part of this equation that we aren't actually able to quantify. You know, my father is an older gentleman, and he's not going out to get his normal haircut. And I think a lot of, unfortunately, some of the customers are not coming out because of the pandemic. So whatever I can do today on Facebook and the pictures that I put up about Marty, received a lot of people commenting, oh, I took my son, got his first haircut there. And, you know, I was just there this week, or I'm going to come in and get a beard trim. So we'll just keep doing that and keep working to promote Marty. And I do think that the square has made a huge difference. And it's done a lot to make the downtown feel lively and calming the traffic. We have half as much noise because of that interruption. People with children say to me all the time that they feel safer walking around. And it's just been pleasant to see everybody work together. It really is a success story of community coming together, working together to adapt and do something different. I think the thing I'm most proud of, the downtown and the city, is taking that leap of faith. I know last time I was here, I was very pushy, but I just didn't want us to let go of this opportunity to be one of the communities that was a model, that took this time, this opportunity, to do something different, try it. And who knows what will come out of it? But working with Karen every day, Karen is, of course, an important person. The restaurants there, all the jobs that have been created, the tips that have come in. Marty was telling me he had a really amazing tip, and some of the restaurants, the workers there, people, the community, want to help, they want to engage. They don't feel comfortable going inside. I think the other thing about extending this is that there is the opportunity to max out the seating that's been prescribed. Well, I think if we can break it up and have people outdoors as well as indoors, it's safer that way, less chance for an outbreak. But just so many positives, and it is one more month. I love the incremental style, how we're doing this. And we really appreciate everybody from the city that's helped out, DPW, the police department, fire, all of the department, people here at the city, and then, of course, all you guys, taking a leap of faith, letting me be a little more than assertive. But I do appreciate all that you guys do on our behalf.
Thank you. I guess, so I support this, and I do at the same time want to check in frequently with you, Marty. I'm happy to do that in person, and do keep us posted if you're really rough. We want to know. Let us know.
Thank you. Ms. Delorco, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My first question is for Intrum City Manager Mike Green. I just want to seek some clarification on recent information coming forward about the statute with respect to liquor license in public spaces. So what you're saying then is that where we previously thought the statute dictated that this would carry us through October 31st, you're now saying that we won't run into any liquor license violations through extending this to November 30th?
The liquor license issue is, at the end of the day, it's up to the businesses to follow it. The whole point of the business recovery zone is we are allowing them to use a public street. That's what we are, that's what we have control over. The state statute is the one that changed for liquor licenses. So they can now use a public right of way, if the city allows it, until November 30th, 2020.
Okay. And that, at this juncture, is all that the business owners in Celine Main Street is asking for at this time, is an extension through November 30th?
As far as I know, from what they've submitted, yes.
Okay. I just want to take a moment to make a comment. I'm proud of the city of Celine for leaning in and helping business owners maintain viability throughout a very difficult period. However, I'm very sensitive to any business owner that is struggling as a result of this decision. And Marty, you've given me many haircuts over the years, and I certainly don't want to see your business fail. And Karen, I drink coffee from your shop several times a week. So the important thing for all of us to consider is that this is a solution that's working well for everyone and not just a select few. And I'm very, I think during the time through the summer, in the wake of COVID-19, it was very important that we made the decisions that we did. And it very well may have saved a few businesses from going under. And I'm hopeful that we can weather the storm for another month, just to get us through this difficult patch. And, or another couple of months, I guess, and through November 30th. And if we can just muster up a little bit of spirit to all lean in and help each other out as best we can. And hopefully, we'll get a vaccine soon, and things can return to some semblance of normalcy. But I am in support of the extension, and I'm grateful that we don't have to circumvent any violations with liquor license, and it's being extended through November 30th at the state level as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's transition to those participating remotely. Mr. Girba, we are at this time just acknowledging receipt of Mr. Green's memo. Do you have questions for the Intrum City Manager or any of our guests who are present this evening?
Not at this time. I've talked to a couple individuals and have, they've raised their concerns about having the ability to have individuals, because their business is based upon traffic driving through and being able to park in front of their business and do some other activities, was a similar concern I had on Michigan Avenue. I don't believe now that I have a concern because of the issue that it's been extended through November 30th. I do recommend that we might consider the ability for them to continue having seating on the sidewalks, if it's going to be maintained and such. If they need to want to do some additional activities through the winter. But at this point, just the extension, I think, is appropriate. I would like to see it happen before a snowfall. So I would almost make it kind of conditional on the weather. But at this time, I believe, hopefully Thanksgiving being later this year, there won't be a concern. So at this point, that's all I have to say.
Very good. Councilwoman Dillon, any questions or comments?
I do have a few comments, thank you. I'm taken a little off guard by not knowing about this November extension till just now. It really wasn't a part of our conversations. So I'm trying to be fluid here as I work. But I do want to say that I do have concerns about continuing. And I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, you know, would there be a window and an opportunity for a compromise? If you use North Ann Arbor Street as the example, that road was also supposed to be closed. When some business raised a concern that it was going to impact them, that group of businesses was able to figure out a plan to benefit everyone. I'd like to see something similar happen on South Ann Arbor Street. Both Brecken and Max have ample outdoor off-street parking. Smokehouse does have space on the street, and which could possibly be extended, excuse me when I say street side, I meant the Michigan Avenue side sidewalk. And there would be potential for that. There is also Leather Bucket Alley, which belongs to the city that Brecken has a contract for and is not at all utilizing at this point. So I would like to have a conversation about that. We do need to look in the totality of businesses. And we need to look beyond the four corners. If we were to extend this to November, then what happens November 31st or November 30th, when this is over? Do they think that people are going to magically go into their businesses? I think we need to start transitioning people to that. Businesses that don't have outdoor seating have people that are coming inside. I think it is a business owner's obligation to make its patrons feel comfortable, safe on the inside also. I just think that we just need to look beyond this. Because at some point, there will be a hard end date. And so we need to figure out a plan in advance of that.
Thank you. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any questions or comments?
Yes, I do, thank you. I think the extension is appropriate. I'm a little surprised to hear it, but I think it's reasonable and that we should proceed. I am happy that the downtown businesses are collaborating, and I'm also sensitive to the businesses that are affected negatively by it. And I also wonder how many of the businesses may be apprehensive about coming forward and voicing their concerns. However, I agree that we need to tread very carefully as we move forward so that the downtown businesses as a whole are surviving, and their businesses isn't being diminished too much. And I think it's wise to keep checking in with them. And I have a lot of faith in Celine Main Street and Holly to stay on top of it and have maybe some other, maybe some other solutions as we move into the cold, you know, into the colder October and November. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kamara Sulek. Before I call for a vote on a motion to acknowledge receipt, were there any additional questions for either our guests or for staff, specifically the Intrum City Manager? No, then we'll proceed to vote. We have a motion on the floor.
Thank you, I have a question, I'm sorry. Thank you. We have not heard any impact from either the police or the fire chiefs as to their thoughts about continuing this. We've also not heard from DPW if there's any impact. As Mr. Girba has mentioned, as we're coming into fall, there may be snow and weather conditions and who is responsible. And so I would like to make sure that we are exploring all of the avenues.
Chief Hart, are you still with us?
Yes, Mayor.
You were at the downtown merchants meeting that was referenced earlier by Ms. Kerrigan. So I know you've been intimately involved in this process from the very beginning. Are there any thoughts that you would like to share from the perspective of our police chief that would benefit our deliberation this evening?
I think that based on what was discussed at the meeting and looking at this proposal, this is a very reasonable request to extend it for the month. I only ask that I think that the patrons will decide when it's too cold, and if it becomes apparent that that area is not being used, that we have the ability to then open up the roads. We are leasing these barricades. Mr. Bennett and I went through quite a task to try to get those on short notice. We are spending, I think it was just around $2,000 or so to rent those barricades at an expense to the city. So the sooner I can clear those out of there and open up the roads, I think we need to be mindful too of our motorists that are driving on our side streets that we talked about earlier in the work session. And I think the month, overall, looking at everything, the month seems to be reasonable. But I also have not spoken to the fire chief on his input either.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Intrum Manager Green, did we receive or did your office receive any feedback from either Mr. Bennett at DPW, any of his associates, or Chief Hatt from the Celine Area Fire Department regarding this issue specifically?
Yeah, Chief's position hasn't really changed. It's the same as before, where as long as he still has access to buildings from one side or the other, he's pretty much good with it. As for DPW, it's on my list to do if you guys did approve it, since I will have to amend their permits that the city gave these businesses to be there. One of the new line items, once I run it past our attorneys, just make sure it's good. It's for them, if there is an event of snowfall, it'd be for those businesses to remove the snow from their spots. Just how we have it in there now, that they're responsible for cleaning it up. If there's trash or broken glass or anything, I don't want the same thing for snow. So that's something on my list to do and run by our attorneys if you guys do approve this.
Very good. Thank you. Councilwoman Dillon, any additional questions?
I think that at this point, I will just pause, and we can move on.
Very good. If there's no additional questions, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Dillon, seconded by CEO, to acknowledge receipt of the September 16th memo from Intrum Manager Green. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Now the chair would be happy to entertain a motion to approve or not to approve, or some hybrid amended motion regarding the downtown recovery zone extension request. Very good. It's been properly moved by Mitchell to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Delorco. Discussion on the motion. Anyone from the dais? Anyone participating via Zoom? Ms. Dillon, Girba, or? Anyone participating via Zoom, Ms. Dillon, Girbaugh, or Kamara Sulek? Any discussion on the motion? I'll start with you, Dean.
Yeah, I would just like to make sure there's some condition on that in terms of the weather. If we do get a major snowstorm or something like that, at that point, after that, I think it's pretty much done. So I think we need to address that somehow in whatever we do.
Very good. Ms. Dillon?
I would like to see this motion be much more specific as to exactly what the city is agreeing to, the timeframe. And as Mr. Girbaugh had said, if we're going to talk about snowfall, we need to put what we mean by that. Does that mean a few flakes? Does that mean three inches? I would definitely would only consider something that had more detail to it.
Understood. Mr. Kamara Sulek, anything, any additional thoughts you'd like to share this evening?
Yes, real quick. I like the comments that Chief Hart had regarding that patrons will show with their with their business if the weather is too inclement for them. And that made me think along the same lines as Mr. Girbaugh and Ms. Dillon regarding when we need to really shut it off if the weather gets that bad because it's not just a snowfall, it's the, you know, it's a slippery, you know, the sidewalks and the roads are slippery. So I think we need to look at that a little closer.
Very good. Mr. Green, can I jump back to you real quick because you messaged on that same topic in your most recent remarks. When you talk to the attorneys and to your colleagues on staff, what specifically were you proposing reference snow removal? Was it just that the businesses would be responsible for removing snow and ice from their tables and chairs in their vicinity, or was it something a bit more specific?
Similar to how we require the businesses to remove snow from their sidewalk, it'd be the same same idea for the pavement areas that they have marked off.
Okay. Mr. Del Orco, please.
I'd just like to suggest that maybe we could modify the motion to reflect that we can confer executive authority between Chief Hart, Chief Haff, and DPW to make an executive decision as to when it's time to pull the plug if we encounter inclement weather or a situation where it's just time to end it. And I think that's a reasonable thing to do.
If you're willing to offer that motion or that amendment, Mr. Del Orco, what I would suggest is, so Mitchell and Del Orco moved to approve the downtown recovery zone extension request, which would extend it to November, and maybe an amendment to that would be that we provide executive authority to the fire chief, police chief, DPW, and Intram City Manager to, I don't know exactly what specific verbiage you would like, but to
Modify?
Yeah, to modify the terms of the recovery zone in the event of inclement weather.
That sounds good.
You're good with that? Mitchell has the mover of that. It's not quite parliamentary procedure, but are you good with that amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. So the mover and second are good with that. Clerk Will, did you catch what I just expressed verbally?
Most of it. I got to modify the, and then I lost you.
Yeah, modify the terms of the recovery zone in the event of inclement weather. Clear on that?
Yes.
Okay. Everyone on council clear on that? And I would just add a few things before we vote. I'm in favor of the motion, especially subsequent to the amendment that was included by Mr. Del Orco and Councilwoman Mitchell. First and foremost, every downtown business and property owner matters regardless of whether you're a restaurant, a retail establishment, or a service enterprise. We appreciate your tenacity and your commitment and all you do for the Celine community. And I want to in particular, highlight the three businesses who are represented here tonight. We appreciate your time and your comments. And I think I speak for the entire group and the entire city when I say we are invested in your success. We want you to prosper in the Celine community as long as you'd like to have a business here. We hope that's for many, many years to come. I would request that the downtown recovery zone be added as a discussion item for the foreseeable future, at least till the end of November, so we can provide our merchants in Celine Main Street the opportunity to comment on both the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I do share the concerns expressed by many, including Mr. Girbaugh, that in the event of inclement weather, specifically snow, I do think it will deter residents and guests from patronizing our restaurants. And I would note, and I hope this is not the case, but I would note that, and many will recall, that last December, last October, right before Halloween, we did receive about three inches of snow. So I am praying and hoping for uncommonly warm weather in November, but I do think it's something that should be closely monitored. And I do support giving the DPW, police chief, fire chief, and Intram City Manager the ability to pull the plug or modify the conditions in the event of extremely cold or inclement weather. So if there's nothing further, we do have a slight
There, I do have one question, I'm sorry, that I would like to ask regarding this, which is, are we permitting at this point, does this extension permit tents, heat lamps, or is that something that needs to go through a different avenue?
No, no. It's just to extend the current conditions of the recovery zone to the end of November.
Okay, so there is no modification?
There's no tents, there's no heat lamps, there's no additions to what currently exists within the recovery zone.
Mayor, I saw a truck unloading a number of heat propane tanks on Sunday or Saturday.
Do you know which enterprise was receiving them?
Nope.
Please come to the podium.
Hey, everybody. First of all, whenever we do a tent, we get a building permit for those things. So nothing is going to be done without the building department inspecting and passing it, as well as the fire department. And I do believe Max did advertise that they had some heat out in their patio, so it could have been for them, but
It's not within the confines of the recovery zone.
Right, right. And I just want to say, you know, I think that we're giving, yes, it is getting cold out, but remember, it was 95 degrees this summer and people were sitting out on top of the pavement and weathering that because they wanted to help the businesses. And just to sort of, I want to address Janet Dillon, Councilor Dillon's comment. Not everybody on North Ann Arbor is happy. And we did find out, we did see that, you know, Dan decided he wanted to close it because he wanted, his workers didn't want to work out in the hot top, and they chose to be on Merchant Square Park or Merchant Park because it was shady. So that was why that ended. And Bill, the barber, was so excited and we thought it was going to help him, but it didn't. It actually did not. He slowed down quite a bit as well, as a lot of our salons and barbers have. So again, and by the way, I worked really hard to put wayfinding signage out there and do everything that I could to support all of the businesses downtown, just as I've been doing from the beginning of COVID-19, informing everybody. I think every business matters too, and especially Marty. Marty knows that I've worked a lot with him. So I just don't want anybody to think that we are favoring anybody over another. I just want us all to give a little and work together and try to just get through this the best we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Holly. Any additional questions or comments on the motion? Then we'll proceed to vote. We have a slightly revised motion moved by Mitchell, seconded by Del Orco. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Ayes have it. The motion carries six to one. Thank you very much. We'll proceed now to the discussion portion of our agenda. First up is Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council members. I know it's just been one week between our meetings, so we may not have many, but any Commission Committee or Task Force reports from the DA's? No? How about those who are participating via Zoom? Mr. Girbaugh, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Not at this point, no. Nothing happening.
Ms. Dillon, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
Not at this time to report out.
Okay, Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Yes, I do, actually. The Arts and Culture Committee met and discussed the continued discussion on the logo rebranding. And work is proceeding on digitizing the 250 items in the Bixby collection, working on the website, how to go about the art around Celine. Obviously, with COVID, it's made so many of these initiatives difficult, but everybody's working hard to, you know, promote art and culture in Celine. And then the Celine Youth Council also met last week. They did the, entered into the Park and Treat event that's coming up in the middle of October. They're talking about doing more murals like they did on the 109 Exchange and also doing some sign painting for the Parks and Rec and the different in the different parks. And looking at other ways to thank teachers for working so hard in this very challenging environment and help spread a, you know, more positive attitude around the community. And they're very energetic to help around town and I'm very impressed and happy to be working with them. And that wraps it up. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. We'll transition now to reports and other announcements. I'll start with those at the DA's. Any reports or announcements? Well, I just have one. I think many residents are aware that there have been a number of complaints of late, particularly in the late spring and summer regarding power outages at various neighborhoods throughout the Celine community. And this has been discussed in numerous threads and posts on social media and elsewhere. And the areas that my office received the most complaints about were the Crestwood subdivision, Wildwood, and then Celine Heights, which is normally defined as Mills, Highland, Hollywood, Russell, McKay, and Lewis. I have reached out to our regional contacts at DTE. We believe, or they believe, rather, that some of the issues in Celine Heights were due to a faulty transformer, which has either been upgraded or replaced. Additional outages in that area and in Wildwood and the Crestwood subdivision, they believe are primarily caused by overgrown vegetation, specifically trees. They indicated that crews would be out in 2021 to remove dead limbs and vegetation that is obstructing the power lines. My office advocated that those, that that work be fast-tracked. And I did receive a commitment from DTE that it is on their work schedule for either the first quarter or the beginning of the second quarter of 2021. So that's information that I will disseminate to the individuals who contacted me directly regarding power outages. It's also something I will share on social media and I will message on in this week's PSA. But I'm pleased that the problems were identified and there's a process for getting them resolved. And again, the amount of power outages that some of our constituents have experienced this past six to eight months, in my judgment, are simply unacceptable. And so that's why we worked aggressively to resolve this. That's the only announcement that I have. Any announcements from those participating remotely? Mr. Girbaugh?
Not tonight.
No? Ms. Dillon? You might be muted, Janet.
I'm sorry. No, I don't have any announcements. Thank you.
Mr. Kamara Sulek?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Very good. Then we'll transition to our last discussion item. Mr. Weigowski, I know it's been just a week, but did you want to provide a brief wastewater treatment plant update?
Yeah, so since last Monday, we've had utilities instrumentation services out on site and they looked at the dam telemetry where it indicates when the level gets high, it brings to the police station. So they're looking into giving us a quote on reestablishing that connection. They also worked at the South Side Pump Station, optimizing the BFDs. As you know, we have one new pump and one rebuilt pump there, and they worked on optimizing those controls. And the last item, they found a bad wire on the last RBC that was giving us problems faulting out. So the last RBC was started up on Thursday. So currently, we have all 18 RBCs running. So I'm pleased to report that.
Very good. Mr. Weigowski, can I follow up with you on an item that was discussed last week, which is water quality? I know that you've been testing a number of residents' water for a variety of things. Is that something, how much of a burden would it place on your staff if we advertised that and made folks aware of the fact that we could evaluate and test their water if they have concerns?
Well, one of the questions is what to test it for. That's probably the biggest question since we don't know what the color has been. So what we have going on this week, I've contacted Process Solutions, they're our consultant, to come out and look at our RO unit. That is down, which is a different issue than that. And they're also going to look into our iron filters and draw a media sample from those and send those out to an outside lab for analysis to see if we've reached the end of the life or if we're getting close to the end of the life of those filters. I would also like to send a sample of representative problem sample to the State Eagle Lab for their normal analysis to see if they could determine what may or may not be an issue. But we do chlorinate the water. We test it bacteriologically on a weekly basis. And that's where we stand since last week. So I'm not sure how long it'll take. I've asked Process Solutions to expedite the sampling and, you know, the overnight or rush delivery on the lab analysis of our media so we can get that resolved as soon as possible to see if that is indeed a problem.
Very good. Well, maybe you can make note of these issues and provide a more substantive update as to the timing and when we would receive those results at our next meeting, which should be on October the 5th.
Absolutely.
Very good. Questions from the DA's? Ms. Mitchell and then Mr. Del Orco.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Steve. Mr. Weigowski, when you say you're not sure what to test for, that is not something that rests easily with me. It makes me concerned. I would assume that you have a basic panel of tests that is of general safety. And is that an incorrect assumption?
No, that's correct. So what we normally test for is looking fine. And what we test for in the distribution system is bacteriological testing and chlorine residual, and that has been fine.
Okay. So perhaps it would help if we were to share that data with residents. And then are you saying you haven't yet identified, do you know for sure that the water is discolored because of rust? Is it iron?
I don't know that. The two or three samples that I've tested when we've had complaints, when I've went to the homes, it's been relatively clear and the iron level has been very low.
Okay. Is it a problem if residents save, you know, if they're doing wash and they notice the tub is rust, you know, is discolored, can they get a jar and scoop some up and have you and contact the water treatment plant?
Yeah, I would just ask if they get a clean container so we can rule out a contaminated container as being a problem.
So what is your suggestion for how we solve that issue?
Well, like I said, we're having a company come out this week to look and see if we have a problem with our sand or with our iron filters. So I think that's a good first step to analyze what's going on there. And then, as I said, if we get a discolored sample, I can send it to the Eagle Laboratory in Lansing and they can run their normal scan of testing and see if anything shows up out of the ordinary.
So when you're talking, if you're saying that you're testing for iron, but you've been testing the water leaving the treatment plant and it's been clear, right? Is that, I think that's what you've told us.
Our iron levels are low, yes.
Okay. So I guess, you know, it's important to check on the green sand issue, but I guess I'm more interested in the root cause and what you think is happening between the clean water at the plant and discolored water that's happening in people's homes.
Yeah, and I've had a discussion with our one chemical salesperson and he said that there's been a fair amount of rusty water in systems this summer due to the high demand, the high, you know, the high heat and the dryness. But we also are having Process Solutions come out and we'll discuss that item on Wednesday or Thursday.
Okay. I guess, here's my concern. In the past two years, our water complaints have increased tremendously, I would say. I never used to hear any water complaints. And so it's not like this is the first time we've had hot weather. And so something isn't quite adding up for me there. And I would really like, what I'd like to hear the next time you report out, I'd like to hear you nail down the root cause for us and have some results of what people are experiencing from samples at their homes. and, and have some results of what people are experiencing from samples at their homes.
I hope I can do that for you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weigowski.
Any questions for the dais? Mr. Delarque, please.
Thank you. Uh, Steve, you, you mentioned something earlier about involving Eagle. Has, have these issues been reported to Eagle at this, at this point?
No, because there had been aesthetic issues, but, um, um, I was planning on going to the lab this week to drop off lead and copper samples. And if I do get a discolored sample, I can drop that off for analysis.
Okay, great. I, I, I truly believe that if, if the water is, is leaving the plant clean and you're, you're not able to detect, um, the presence of iron, um, in the water, that there's, there's got to be some issues with sediment, um, uh, settling at various places throughout the infrastructure. And, um, we talked about increased frequency of directional flushing and, um, hopefully we can get on a regimented, uh, program that's, that's more stringent, more rigorous and, and be able to, uh, successfully address this problem through, um, proactive preventative maintenance and the flushing. But I, I would like to see, uh, Eagle be involved in this process at this point, um, to formally report the issues that we're having with Eagle and then have them, uh, test the water and, and report back to us as, as to what might be present in the water.
Very good.
Uh, Mr. Gearball, any comments or questions for Ms. Weigowski? You might be muted.
Yep, I had to let me, um, Mr. Weigowski, when is our next annual report? We always do a water report that's on our city, um, website that indicates all the types of aspects that we have to do as a requirement of the state. When is that next report due?
Yeah, it was due in June. Yep, and it should be on our, our site.
Okay. So that, that report's available at this point then?
I, I believe it's on our site.
Okay. Um, in terms of your daily, um, testing of the water and all of that, you report that information to the proper authorities in the state, correct?
We do a monthly operating report by the 10th of the month following the reporting month.
Um, I appreciate your going out to process results and so forth. I think just having an additional double check of what we already are testing for and everything is appropriate, uh, appropriate approach at this time just to consider the, uh, issues that have come up. As you know, over the two decades, we've seen significant issues with rusty water. And after we put in the treatment plant, that significantly increased it. I agree, there have been additional comments, but I'm not so sure what, um, has been contributing to that, except for maybe some of the issues that you mentioned, which is water usage and sediment in the pipes. I believe we had some other situations in other neighborhoods that we've resolved those concerns and we're addressing like the banging and some of those other aspects that I think we're having issues in those neighborhoods, but those have kind of cleared up at this point. So it seems like it's an issue that goes throughout our system. It just depends on where it shows up, depending on whatever is the age and the, um, conditions of our pipes. So again, as I've stated, and I think, um, was reinforced this week by the interim city manager, it's the issue of how fast we can replace all those pipes and how much willingly the customers and users are to pay additional fees to get those replaced at this point. So continue to do what you're doing and, um, keep it on, uh, keep us informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, but to Gearball. Councilman Dillon, any questions?
Thank you. I do have a few questions, um, for Mr. Weigowski. Thank you. Um, first I want to start on something different. Um, and I'm not sure whether you or Mr. Green would have the information. Is the dam inspection, um, I've asked about this a few, a few times. I was told that they were waiting on some data. Um, is there a preliminary report? Because it does seem like the city has taken some action, um, repairing the wall, um, the, the railing. Um, they had some sort of a loader out there doing some excavation. So is there a preliminary report?
I can take that one. Um, yeah, the, our consultant Spicer Group is still waiting for, uh, some hydrologic data from the state. That's, uh, the only source of that data, um, in the, uh, in the protocol for a dam inspection. So, um, they apparently are, are pretty backed up. So we're still waiting on that information. Um, they did give us a, uh, just after their site inspection, uh, didn't give us a preliminary report, but said, uh, gave us a, a sort of an urgent recommendation to, uh, make some, uh, do some maintenance on the railing. So, uh, that, that work has been completed.
I appreciate that. I did notice that, um, there was staff out there and that the Jersey barrier type thing is gone. Um, so I'm glad, because that is a highly used area and making sure it's safe is very important. So thank you, Mr. Floridas. Um, Mr. Weigowski, quick question for you. When we talk about specimens, I appreciate what you were saying about making sure that things are collected in a way in which there is not a cross contaminant. Is there an opportunity maybe for the city to have specimen cups, um, available at City Hall or at various locations so that you know that you are getting a, a clean sample?
Uh, yes, even a, 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 a clean rinsed glass, glass bottle, you know, jar from somebody's home would be fine. But sometimes you've, you've had people bring things in in cans, um, you know, which are totally inappropriate. But something that's been cleaned with the water we're reusing would be fine. Or I could drop off some sample containers if, uh, at City Hall on the desk.
Okay. Um, the other thing I wanted to ask was that I know we did have a discussion, I believe, at our last meeting about hydrant flushing. Um, was there anything that came of that? Is that something that we've decided to do? Is there a schedule for it? Do we think that there's a benefit to it?
I, I take that one too. Um, so, uh, we've had some, uh, some discussions on, uh, different approaches to addressing this problem. And, um, we are looking at both some short-term things like flushing and increasing the frequency of that. And, um, we are looking at some longer-term solutions too, um, like was discussed at the last council meeting, the, uh, perhaps the need to add additional storage. Uh, perhaps we need to increase the size of some of our transmission mains. So we have, uh, we were, we're beginning that. Um, we are meeting with, uh, Steve and, and Mike and I are meeting with Tetra Tech on Thursday to, uh, go over existing information and, um, approaches that we think might have, uh, the benefit of basically decreasing the velocity in the distribution system. But there's not a, the, the flush has not been scheduled yet because one of the issues that, um, we faced with our last flush was, uh, just some, we, we had to modify our procedures because we weren't getting the, um, the volume that we really wanted. So, uh, we're going to, um, talk about that on Thursday as well. And maybe if we have a way of increasing the volume, then we'll get into the, uh, scheduling of the flushing so that we're, um, with the goal of being ready for the high-demand period next summer.
Additional questions, Ms. Dillon?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I was muted for some reason. Um, is there a flushing season? Like, do you have to stop like in October and can't pick up till spring? Like, is that window closing?
Yeah, no, the only, um, there's not any, um, there's no official window. Um, the only time we wouldn't want to do it is in, uh, extreme low temperatures, uh, because then we'd have to, uh, re-winterize all the hydrants and we'd have, you know, ice issues.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And then I've got one last question, I think, for Mr. Weigowski. Um, I, there has definitely been detectable odors from the wastewater treatment plant, um, lately. And I know that we have that handheld meter, which doesn't seem to pick up on the odors that we have. It's, it, it seems as though it's always reading nothing, even though we know there's an odor present. Are there other meters that are for other smells?
Um, not that I'm aware of. Since hydrogen sulfide is the predominant odor in, in sewage, that, that is, you know, the, the, the largest odor that, so that's, um, what is normally measured. Um, there's so many other chemicals, uh, it would be hard to have a meter that was specific for each chemical. Um, I will apologize. I did try to get that, it's called a Accrolog is the meter. Um, it has been running, but I, I couldn't download the data. I thought I got it to start logging the other day. And when I tried to download it again today, I had a problem again. So, um, every time I do look at it, it is reading zero and it's right near our fence line. So, um, I will work on getting that, uh, data to log again by talking to the manufacturer. But it is not picking up significant, uh, hydrogen sulfide odors at the fence line.
I appreciate that. And then my last question, I promise, um, is you had mentioned that you were bringing in a consultant to check on basically the viability of a piece of equipment and whether it had sort of reached its maximum usable life. Do we have in place measures, um, for maintenance and automatic replacement for equipment? Like, where does that fall in that process?
Yeah, we have a, um, capital improvement plan and, um, for those sand filters, they were in the budget for this year to have the media inspected. Um, and I can't remember if the replacement of the media is scheduled for net next fiscal year or the year after.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kamira Sulek, do you want to wrap it up? Any questions for Mr. Weigowski?
Yes, thank you. I, I would like to wrap it up. I, Mr. Weigowski, could you give us a status on the, on the clarifiers? Are they still both up and, and, and functioning to adequate levels?
Yes, they are.
Okay. And I was going to ask about, I'm glad to hear that. I also want to ask about that, um, the odor measurement tool. Do we have, is there a schedule that you go by of how often, like, is there a, a daily or a weekly schedule that you use that device to test for odors and a time of day? And, you know, if there's any, if there's any wind or could you just briefly explain what that looks like?
Yeah, I, I believe you can figure it, can configure it for all different types of, um, frequencies. Um, the only recorded frequency I've been able to, to get, and again, I'll work on that. Um, I thought I had it going last week, but, uh, it's measuring. But, uh, I did send some data to Mr. Green for the period of, uh, approximately July 4th to August 4th. And it takes a sample every 10 minutes. And, um, and that does it around the clock. And then it records that sample. And then you can download that to the computer and look at a pattern if, if you, um, can see a pattern.
So do you, you physically have to take that tool out to the fence line or?
No, I, I bought a, um, a, a weather guard for it that we hang it, um, um, from the railing right near the RBCs by Mrs. Armbruster's house.
Okay.
It records. Um, and we thought that would probably be the worst-case scenario. So we, that's where we've had it hanging for, for a while.
Okay. And how often does it need to be checked or recalibrated to make sure that it's working properly?
Um, they recommend calibrating it once per year.
Okay. Very good. And then lastly, I didn't see anything about the NOVA filters. And then Ms. Dillon didn't, uh, ask about the NOVA filter. So I was really shocked. Um, so I, I'll, I'll ask since she didn't and I'm, I'm hoping there's a, a, another positive answer.
Yeah, so the NOVA filters are running. Um, we've had a backwash pump that's been very loud, which is our responsibility. I purchased a backwash pump. We've had a spare. Uh, we're going to have that installed this week. The footprint on it is slightly different than the existing footprint. So, uh, Scholdyce Industrial is coming out to, uh, drill some new holes in the base so the, the pump can adapt to the, uh, existing base and, um, it, it will keep running.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Weigowski. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Kamira Sulek. Uh, we'll transition now, uh, unless there's additional items to be brought during the discussion portion of tonight's agenda. We'll transition now to public comments. Uh, this is our second public comment period. And under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, may come to a question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who is, who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Again, we'll begin with folks who are in the audience. We still have three with us. Um, if you are participating remotely and you would like to ask a question or raise a concern, please type it in under the chat icon at the bottom of your screen. And please note at the top of your comments that they are to be read during this specific public comment period. Please.
Uh, thanks again. Uh, first off, I would like to thank council on behalf of the downtown businesses who do benefit from the street closure, Umbrella Square Recovery Zone. With the, with the modifications that you made, I think that it's obvious that if guests are not coming out, we would definitely relinqu, be willing to relinquish that area. And I just was curious if that does happen, that we do have similar notice as far as, uh, snow removal and so forth of 12 hours, 24 hours, so that we can, we can staff to have that. Um, and then I would also like to clarify to Ms. Dillon about the, the use of, of Leather Bucket Alley. Uh, for liquor control requirements and, uh, smokehouses benefit of, of Umbrella Square, uh, they could not utilize a space that is licensed and being used by another licensed establishment, uh, by walking their products through an area. So once, once the recovery zone, um, has been dissolved, we definitely will recoup that space and, and continue to utilize that. Um, our intention at the Brecken Grill is to, uh, utilize the sidewalk cafe and the Leather Bucket Alley, uh, as long as weather permitting for us, since we do have the agreement to go through next summer. Uh, so I will probably see you in the future requesting maybe some modifications or some, some possible different uses of the sidewalk and, and coverings on there and so forth. So, thanks for your time tonight.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Grigozian. We appreciate it. Additional public comments from those in the audience, please. If you'd like to step forward to the podium.
Yeah, name is Elka Dozauer on the, live on the property 586 Lancaster Court. And can I still speak to the issue of delinquent, uh, property taxes?
Absolutely.
Okay.
I guess you'd like to speak.
Okay. Um, I'd just like to say why in the 20 years of the property that I was delinquent. It's always been paid on time. And, uh, the reason this time was, um, it, it was kind of overlooked. I'm just recovering from having lost my husband to Alzheimer's and cancer. And I was the sole caretaker and also coming, uh, to grips with my diagnosis with a cancer. So, and with the COVID virus, I kind of, uh, I couldn't pay it in July, but then in August, but then I just slipped my mind with everything. And as soon as I got the, uh, uh, delinquent notice on the Saturday before Labor Day, uh, I made sure I would have funds to pay then. And I couldn't until Tuesday. So I think there were three business days that, uh, I was delinquent. Um, I did pay the full amount minus the, um, the, uh, the penalty. And, um, so for that reason, um, requesting or asking in a council to waive that penalty this time, because it was a first-time offense and hopefully never will happen again. And I just feel it's kind of a high, uh, chunk to pay for three days, $171. And, uh, also being a pensioner with limited income, I, it's, I, I would appreciate not having to pay that. And for those reasons, it was missed. And, uh, just wanted to state that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there additional public comments this evening? Please, Mrs. Hess.
I appreciate the comments of Mr. Gearball and the concerns of also Ms. Dillon regarding downtown recovery zone. Uh, last week it was cold on a couple of days and I went uptown and there were hardly any people outside on the tables where the Brecken Grill and the Smokehouse 52 is. Now, in November, not only is snow a concern, but frost. And if somebody would slip on ice and break their ankle or lord knows what, uh, would we be liable? I think it's very important that we look at, and Mr. Green is going to address the liability issue. Uh, when Ms. Holly said how wonderful the downtown has gotten together, I think they also should be thanking the entire city of Celine. Because Old Creek has had to put up with a lot of traffic and trucks. And I know when they have the merchants together, I'm wondering if they are inviting the merchants that are not downtown for their input, because they do pay the taxes. And, uh, be it the 2,000 for the, uh, prohibitive to, we don't go down or, I, I think we, the cost should be shown exactly what it is costing for the closure. And if in fact, I don't want to put it on just the DPW or the police department to pull the plug. to pull the plug. I think it's important that since the council has given, the council should take away if something should happen, be it frost, or the notice that there's nobody using it because they're too cold. As far as Brecken, Brecken, I remember at one time was a bank. And it also then was Celine City Hall. And it's not a big building. And nothing's going to make it bigger. But I do have concerns with extending the November. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hess. Any additional comments? No? Thank you. Clerk Royal, did we receive any comments via email or under the chat icon this evening?
Yes, I do have one. Jen Harmout, 222 Monroe Street. She had a question regarding the Mill Pond Boardwalk project from the last agenda. She would like to understand what criteria different bid options were compared by and why the chosen developer is an excellent choice. What is their past history of completing projects on time and on plan? What is the backup protection for the city if project is not completed by the promised completion date? And she would like a decision matrix. Also, what is the historic safety rating? I did forward this on to Carla and Jeff, just so you know.
Very good. And I would encourage Ms. Harmout, if she hasn't already, to also take a look at Minutes on Demands, because some of the, well, the support material will be provided there. But if she still does have questions, she's welcome to email or call my office. And as you stated, it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, Clerk Royal, you indicated that her question was forwarded to Jeff and Carla?
Yes.
Very good. Are there any additional comments or questions this evening? If so, you may type them under the chat icon at the bottom of your screen. The record will reflect there are none. The three folks, the three individuals who commented this evening, we appreciate your remarks. And appreciate the time you took to attend the council meeting this evening. Thank you very much. Please note our upcoming meetings, there is one, there are actually two omissions on your agenda. We do have a work meeting on the 5th at 6:00 PM regarding the Huntington Woods Connecting Sidewalk, which I emailed you about. And I put a placeholder at 6:00 PM on the 19th in the hopes that the environmental analyses of our wastewater treatment plant and the two former Hoover Universal diecast sites will be complete, and we can continue our dialogue on growing in place and expanding our existing wastewater treatment plant. If there's nothing further, then at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to go into closed session at 8:33 to consider material exempt from discussion and disclosure by state and federal statute regarding privileged legal opinion of the city attorney's office dated September 16, 2020 regarding E&amp;L Construction Group. The city council will reconvene and direct your session at the conclusion of our closed session.
Moved?
Moved by Gearball. Was that a second by CEO?
Yes, sir.
Very good. The clerk will please call the roll.
Mayor Protim, I'm sorry, Mary Protim Gearball?
Yes.
Councilmember CEO?
Yes.
Councilmember Dillon?
Yes.
Councilmember Camaro Sulek?
Yes.
Councilmember Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilmember Del Orco?
Yes.
Mayor Marl.
Yes, we are convening to close session at 8:33 PM. And we had asked our guests to please leave at this time, but we do appreciate your attendance.